And we really need to keep it focused on that information that she's going to be sharing with us because it's extremely important. I know that everybody has been, not everybody, but a lot of people have been asking questions about, you know, how do we get technology and technology services to the community that we work with? That will be a separate call. It's not, we don't have enough time for that right now. However, what I can say is that I hope everybody's getting creative and, you know, coming from Empower Tech, trust me, I'm working on it. By getting technology into the hands of the people, it's, it's not going to happen overnight. So anyway, with that being said, I'm going to give it over to Ms. Wonderful Mary Lou.
Thanks, Jeff. Hi, everybody. As I said in my memo, we have a million questions and very few answers. But one thing that is happening pretty soon is that the retention funding is no longer going to be available. So what does this mean? DDS has developed emergency regulations that we have sent out. If you don't have them, they're on the DDS website. I think they're on our website. But basically, it is the outline for alternative or remote services or virtual services. We still haven't even defined a remote versus virtual. So it's a whole, you know, it's a very fluid process. But with these regulations, I guess it was, I want to say in June, maybe July, where we sent out the sample attachment A, attachment B, attachment C. So what has happened is the regulations reflect attachment A. The Westside has created a website that we've sent out where you can go in and self-certify that you are going to provide alternative service delivery. You have to self-certify to provide the service now. Many of you have sent us your designs. That's great. But if you haven't, there's also a part of this site is a page for you to type out your one-page profile of your alternative service delivery. The reason we're asking for that is because we need to then provide that to service coordinators so that they can inform families of what's available. If you have been providing in-person services, I think some of our psychologists, our OTs, PT, speech therapists, if you've been providing that, or supported living, you know, ILS, then what you need to do is make sure that you have your personal protection plan as well as your plan of how you are going to follow CMS guidelines, California Department of Health guidelines, and LA County Department of Health guidelines. You have to follow those and you have to show us how you're doing that in those proposals and in those plans. Billing for this is not quite clear at this time. Late last night, so as I said, this is very fluid. I was informed that DDS potentially is going to use a contractor to develop rates for alternative service delivery. This is not set in stone. It seems like that's the way they're going to go, but I won't really know until August 27th, when we meet with them. So, and also tomorrow, the directors have a meeting with DDS. So any information that we get from that meeting will pass on to you. And then our meeting on the 27th will pass on to you. However, retention services end August 31st. So I need everybody to understand that. I also want to say, we are not saying get back out there and do in-person services. We need to stay safe. Hopefully, no, actually, everyone has done an excellent job. Our case rate for infection is much smaller than other regional centers. And it's all because people have really listened to the health departments and they're following, you know, stay safe, safer at home, whatever it is, whatever they're calling it this week. And that's incredible. But I also want to encourage people to look at alternative service delivery and to embrace it if you haven't already because my understanding from reading the LA County Health Directive yesterday very carefully is no more than 10 people can gather if they're not family members. So that's what you need to keep in mind. Plus, I know at our last town hall, Patie did a really great presentation on how that works. It is on tape, so you can certainly, I mean, I'm sorry, we have it on our website. So you can certainly go there and listen to what she did. That doesn't mean that's what you'll do, but it gives you some guidelines. Trying to think if there's anything else in this ever-changing world. I know there's a lot of questions. We'll try to answer them as best as we can. But my big concern now is that you, if you're going to provide alternative service delivery, get us a topic, get us your self-certification and the self-certification. Oh, let me go through that a little bit. You'll go through and, you know, identify what types of services you're going to have in the first section. The second session, section, you have to complete all of those. So the survey or the certification won't let you go past certain things unless you say, I will do it. So I want to make sure, then at the end, you hit completed. It comes directly to Westside. You can print a copy for yourself so that you have it for your records. And, you know, we'll move on from there. So as I said, it's very fluid. And we do need those one-page profiles, if you haven't submitted them, with the certification. There is a box, if you've already submitted, you can check the box that says, I've already done it, and it lets you complete the survey. Joan, is there anything else I'm missing on all that?
I'm wondering, Mary Lou, did you want Rhiannon to share her screen just to show people what we're talking about?
Yes.
I think that might be helpful. And I think that one thing that I just wanted to clarify that our understanding of the self-certification is for all non-residential providers. So anyone who's providing services that are not in a quote-unquote residential setting, which is, you know, adult residential facility and ICF, those types of settings, even supported living providers should complete this self-certification process.
If they're doing any type of alternative service delivery. If you have any providing support living services the way you always do, that's fine. So you don't need to provide this. But you want to provide us with your personal protection plans and how you're going to be adhering to the health department and CDC guidelines. So now that the form is up there, you'll see that the first one, the first section, remote and alternative services, you will check what you're doing in this model. You can pick one, you can pick all of them. I don't know if you would necessarily pick all of them. But when we get into the certification part, that's what you have to have in place, okay, to do this service. You have to have your protection plan. You have to discuss with every, oh, yeah. And if you, if there's something else you're doing under other, then you want to, you know, put that in. Let's see. You, at some of these, you really will want to say, you're going to have to tell us if it's by telephone or video communication. You're completing person-centered plans. Completed individual assessments. There's a lot here. I hear that. And we don't expect you to have all of this done by, well, it would be nice if it was all done by August 31st, but we know that it's very short notice. We've held off on introducing this because, as I said, it's ever-changing and it even changed again last night as far as the funding goes. So you need to complete, excuse me, you need to complete all of this. And when you get into the certification portion, maybe we can scroll it up a little bit. Yeah. These are the things that you must have in place, okay? Especially when you see that where there's the two, there's the phone number and the email. You have to provide us with a phone number to provide to families and a website so that they are able to respond, you know, if something's going on or they need to tell you, hey, my son, my daughter, my husband, whoever has, you know, has tested positive or whatever's happening. So we need to have that information. But all of these things must be followed. And it's a lot. So one of the things I do want to point out, the staff training, you really want to document that. You want to have that in place. This is also, some of these things can be used during your alternative service to talk, you know, to work with individuals around cultural linguistic competencies, how to use technology, you know, doing person-centered planning. So all of these things can be done as a remote service, but you have to self-certify that you are doing or will be doing this. You'll fill out the bottom with your vendor number, your service code, your name. And we will, you can do this for all of your service codes on one sheet. We're not, if some of you have different service delivery, we're not asking you to, you know, do a separate sheet for everyone. If they're radically different, you may want to make sure you outline that in your, your service delivery profile is what I'm calling it. I don't know what it'll end up. And that's going to be on the second page. Can we scroll down to this? Yeah, there we go. So this is where you will type in your vendor name, your vendor numbers, and your text. If in fact, you've already provided that, there's a checkbox that says, I have provided this information. And you check that, then you go to the bottom once you complete this one-page profile. And somewhere on there, it lets you, oh, it's, it's in the bottom corner where you'll say, save and submit. So, the only other thing I want to point out is that the directives and LA County Health Department, et cetera, people who live in ICF's, ARFitions and ICFDDNs, ICFCMs and ARFitions are not allowed to receive in-person service unless it's medically related or some kind of, you know, quality of life issue that needs to be taken care of. So they will not be able to do any type of in-person service at this point. So I really need you guys to understand that because they're so medically fragile that they're really not allowed to go outside at all, which is very challenging for them. But that's, that's just the way that the directives and the CDC guidelines, or excuse me, the LA County guidelines are mapped out. At this point, I think we can take some questions, Rhiannon.
Should I do my spiel quickly, Mary Lou, also about the self-assessment just so that we can take questions across the board before we go into it?
Sounds great.
So, and then I guess one last question before we move on from this. It's my understanding that DDS wants these in place by 8:31. Is that correct?
They do.
So we want to try and have as many of these submitted by the end of the month from all non-residential service providers.
That are, that are doing alternative service deliveries. If you're going to person and we're not saying that that's the path we're asking you to take, we do need the protection plans in place before you commit in-person service. That one is a for sure.
Great. So I also just wanted to take a minute to remind folks, and I'm sure that you saw when you received the invitation to this town hall, that for providers who are required to complete the home and community-based services self-assessment, the deadline is fast approaching. That's August 31st as well. The home and community-based services final rule self-assessment is a port, there's a portal login. Many of you have already received your login information. I know there's been challenges. I've been in contact with many of you and trying to do as much troubleshooting as I can. And I would continue to encourage you, if you're not able to log in or if you're having issues with the portal, to contact me. The providers that must complete an assessment are all day service providers. So both center-based day services, community-based day services, and our tailored services providers. Just a quick note for our tailored services providers, I've reduced your survey to one survey rather than doing one for each ratio of staffing. But I would encourage you to speak to all the ratios of staffing that you provide. If you do some one-to-two or one-to-three services under tailored services, I would encourage you to speak to how the services change based on the staffing ratio. So all our day services, all employment providers who do group placement or work activity programs must complete a self-assessment. And then all residential providers, except for ICF's and ICFDDNs, they're funded under a different waiver. So all of the ARFs, the ARFitions, the EBSHs, all the residential providers in those categories must complete a self-assessment. We've done really, really well. Many of you have already logged in and completed. I've also noticed some people have logged in and completed part of their survey and that maybe you were unable to submit it in its whole fashion. So I would encourage you to go, go back into the portal. And I understand it's been extremely frustrating for many of us. It's been so glitchy. There are some questions, all the questions in the self-assessment, many of them are mandatory. And so it may not seem like it applies, but try and choose the question, the answer to the question that is closest to what your understanding should be of the question. Or if you need help walking through that, you can call me. Just to make sure all the fields are filled out because there are some, some ones that like, you'll try and hit submit, and if it's not filled out, it'll, it won't allow you to submit the survey. I encourage you to try and fill it out with as much detail as you possibly can. If you can't, if you don't have the capacity between now and August 31st to add detail to it in a level that would really reflect the contribution of the people you support, I just encourage you to complete it to the best of your ability. Right now, we still have about 150 surveys that are remaining that need to be completed. And it will, it will benefit you to make sure it's submitted to DDS because you'll be more likely to receive an audit if you do not complete the self-assessment. So this is a lot right now. We have, you know, the self-certification for remote services, the HCBS self-assessment. And all of these processes relate to more oversight from DDS on our program. And we really want to set you up for success. And so completing the HCBS self-assessment and reflecting the services that you're providing, both in home and in the community, will help us to attain that goal. So I really encourage, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns.
We've got quite a lot of questions. So I think we can knock out a few of them all in one. Do we need to submit a self-certification if we are going to continue doing telehealth?
Telehealth, yes. Any alternative service delivery, although the directors approve that, we want to make sure that you fill this out. I would rather you fill it out to be on the safe side and not have to come back around and say, oh, no, we didn't do it. You're in trouble. So I would just do that to be, if they say all non-residential services, then the only services that they're excluding are CCF's, ARFitions, EBSH, I don't know, and ICF's, but they're not on the same waiver. So I suggest you fill it out to make sure that you've covered yourself with the self-certification as a non-residential service.
Yeah, so kind of going along that lines, I mean, you've answered it, Mary Lou, but someone is asking how this would apply to their pediatric clinic that only provides telemedicine. How, yeah.
It's the same thing. You're providing a non-residential service. So the department is requiring that you complete a self-certification, that you're following what you're doing and how you're doing it. So it's, it's really, I, you know, at this point, that's the only answer I can give you. Maybe next week I'll have something different. Maybe it'll be tomorrow. It's a pretty easy survey to, or excuse me, certification to fill out. It's just making sure that you document everything that you've certified to.
For the date of, on the self-certification, is it the date you started doing remote services or today's date?
We launched it Monday. It's Wednesday, right? I don't even know what day. Yeah, you can do it the date that you submitted because it really is effective September 1st that you're self-certifying that when you start alternative service delivery on September 1st, you have all this in place, if that makes sense.
If we are only doing remote services, do we need to complete a COVID protection plan?
No. If you're not doing any in-person at this point, but I recommend you have one for your staff if they're, you know, if they're going to be in a same area or location, just like every business has a COVID plan. You should always have that for your business. But if you're not going to be doing any in-person at this point, the protection plan isn't, you know, isn't necessary.
Does the self-certification process take the place of the plan previously requested by WRC, including the attachment sent to us by WRC by DDS?
Okay, the self-certification is now in place for remote, for alternative service delivery starting September 1st. If you sent us a design or a profile of your remote services already and you've heard from the QA that you sent it to or some, you know, somebody that, yes, it's okay, just click the box that you've already submitted it. But we do need a certification.
And going off of that, how will compliance with the self-certification be monitored or will it?
It will be monitored. I don't know. You know, we will, I'm sure there will be directives to tell us how to make sure that these things are in place. We just need you right now as service providers to have this documentation so that when, it's not even if, when we receive the directive that we, or what our responsibilities are in monitoring this, you'll have everything.
Hey, everybody, could I jump in real quick? How we should all be approaching this is that, yes, just, just kind of be expecting in the back of your brain that someone will be stopping by to make sure that we're all in compliance. So just, just get all the documentation together, have it readily available, make sure your staff knows where it's at, just in case that someone does walk through your door or whatever the case may be. So you're, you're not going to get, you know, excuse the pun, but, you know, caught unaware, like a deer in a headlights.
Yes, and there are actually two other forms that we haven't launched today. One is a monthly report and one is a quarterly report. We will be putting those into fillable reports soon and put it on our website and send out to you. However, I'm not sure which one you'll submit to us and which one you'll keep for your records because that also changed yesterday. But what you're going to, we sent out samples of those a couple, about a month or so ago, maybe not that long. And we can certainly send those out to you again if you didn't receive them or you didn't keep them. But I don't, at this moment, I don't know how the reporting is going to go. I'll be very honest with you. It's either going to be you keep your monthly reports for us when we have to come monitor and then you submit your quarterlies, or you're going to submit both. Or you're going to submit the monthly and not the quarterly. It's, it's really up in the air right now and I apologize. So there are going to be reporting forms, but we haven't launched those yet because we're not 100% clear on what's supposed to be submitted and what's supposed to be kept in your records. I hopefully can clear that up by the 27th, if not later. We really want to focus on getting everybody self-certified so that you can continue to bill for service.
Okay. Regarding the attachment A, if we have no staff beyond ourselves, does the last box still apply? I'm assuming they're referring to the training because that's the last box.
Well, the, the training would be for that independent provider, that you would keep up your CEUs or you would attend certain workshops. That's more for you, your, your research, what needs to be done to, you know, provide this service. So even if you're just a single person, you still want to keep yourself educated. So I think the training would, would reflect what you are doing for yourself.
Yeah, and just kind of going on what someone's saying is, is that training for staff or families and they're self-certifying their staff, correct?
Yeah, but you're also wanting to train your individuals on safety during the pandemic. And that can be part of your alternative service delivery. So they're looking at training for your staff, but they're also looking to see as part of your, your service profile, that can be part of the services that you're providing remotely is education regarding COVID, education regarding staying safe, how to put on a mask, how to put up and you take off a mask, you know, things like that, how to wash your hands. Years ago, I had a fun conversation with a vendor, how washing hands is a whole task analysis that's vital for each person to know. But you want to, and when we talked about HCBS, what we're also encouraging you to do in your service delivery is not only just classes that you create, but go out and find community activities that are happening. All the museums have virtual museum days, there are book clubs for people that like to read. There's music. There's a lot of things because everybody's in the same boat right now. We can't go anywhere, but we're doing it virtually. So take advantage of what everyone else is doing and bring that into your program to make it more robust and to make it integrated. So it's fine if the group wants to do a group thing on Zoom together, but give them the opportunity to look at these other things. I mean, Culver City has a lot of events that go on virtually. And they have the Fiesta Bayona for three days virtually. So there are things going on and that would be a really good way to integrate your, your program and help people to meet new people on Zoom.
I was just going to say, Megan and I had, we had come across a document on plain language that's in plain language explaining COVID-19 for the individuals we serve. So I just put that in the chat box because I'm looking at what training folks are supposed to be checking off that they've accomplished. I do also see person-centered thinking on that list. So for those of you who have not yet taken person-centered thinking, we, myself, Megan, and our co-trainer Stephen Browning are going to start offering PCT in the coming months again to our community. We were recently certified. So as a regional center, we'll be able to start offering that to the larger community by the end of the year. But you can look to some other trainers that, that offer it in the area. So if you're in need of, want a training sooner, then we can offer it. You can reach out to me. My email is rhiannonm. You should all have it if you registered for this event. And I can try and direct you to some PCT training. But like I said, we'll be offering it pretty soon. So I just wanted to mention that. And then Megan, I, I think maybe you can take this. Is there any criteria for what needs to be, and will we answer that, for what needs to be in the training? For example, what are the cultural and linguistic competencies, et cetera?
So, so I think what the reason why DDS is including the specific topics that are included in the self-certification process are related to the home and community-based services final rule, which require that services are culturally competent, person-centered, and integrated to the fullest extent in the community. So in terms of criteria, I don't think that there's been a criteria set specifically around cultural and linguistic competency necessarily. But one resource I would point you towards is there's the Georgetown Center for the National, the National Center for Cultural Competency that's based in Georgetown. And their website has a ton of training resources and specific training resources for people with disabilities and the relationship between providers providing support to people with disabilities as it relates to cultural and linguistic competence. So you can use any resources that you think would be helpful for the community that you serve. So I would just encourage you to seek out any sort of training resources that exist. That's just one example of a really great training resource for cultural and linguistic competency.
We're also involved with the Center for Start Services. And it's a new program that we're launching. And they also are working on different trainings regarding that. Their website, and I'll have to get that ran into you to, I don't have it right at my fingertips. But they have a lot of good information there regarding COVID and people with. But, um, they have a lot of good information there regarding COVID and people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, let me see if I can find it real quick.
I got it, Mary Lou, I'll put it in the chat box, Center for Start Services, their website.
Yeah, um, they have a lot of information on there, and they have trainings, and they have a lot of different things. And they do provide services to people with ADD who also have mental health issues. Um, so you'll start to hear more and more about this. Um, we're going to have another orientation in September. Everyone's invited, whoever would like to come. Um, so, you know, that's another opportunity to, to get training and also to get ideas for training. I think one thing you can look at with the self-certification, the things that are required, help to build your remote services, because you would be working with individuals and helping them to understand these different, you know, different topics.
Things in the chat box. Um, oh, Megan already got it. So, and then Megan, I think you wanted to answer this one as well. What do you mean exactly by informed decision-making?
So informed decision-making is a process that, uh, is created to help people with disabilities make their own decisions about their lives, um, and make choices based on a full knowledge of the risks that's involved. Um, I think the reason why informed decision-making is super important right now is that, um, people feel a loss of control of their lives right now. We're in the middle of a pandemic that's taken a lot of choice and control away from us. And so, um, informed decision-making is really important to help the people that we serve and their families um, fully understand what risks are, what choices are, and be able to make meaningful, have meaningful control over the things that we can have control over. Um, there's tons of training resources online about informed decision-making. If you Google informed decision-making, you'll see there's, there's templates that you can use for trainings. There's templates you can use in the person-centered planning process around informed decision-making that helps guide someone through the process of like, how do I make a decision? Who do I go to for information? Who do I seek out as a person that I trust to help me make a choice? So I would encourage you to seek out those kinds of training resources, and they're both important for people we serve and families, because families have to make a lot of, you know, really difficult decisions right now as well. So any training you can do around that would be really fantastic.
Oh, one second. Um, I think this is in regards to attachment A. We can provide email address, we don't need a specific website, correct, on the first page?
Right, what's required is a phone number and an email address. Um, because they need to be, for contact purposes. And, you know, doing this really well will also help service coordinators to inform families of what services you're now, you're going to be providing. There's, there's some question as to whether IPPs will have to be redone. You know, new POS will have to be, a purchase of service request will have to be done, so I don't know, but it's important that you have that information on there so people know where and how to contact you.
When retention funding seizes, will programs be able to bill for consumers who do not, as of yet, have the technology to access?
That's a very good question, and I don't have an answer for that yet, because, um, since things kind of changed yesterday, that there's, um, going to be, uh, a company assisting with developing rates, more than likely that will dictate how funding will go. So we encourage, if you can't, you know, the, the emergency regulations allow for phone as well as virtual. So if people at least can talk through by phone, that will count as alternative service. And we're trying desperately to come up with some kind of a plan for technology, but we don't have one yet, unfortunately. I mean, we have great ideas, but funding it is, is the difficulty.
Who at Westside do we send the summary to? What should we write in the box if summary not sent?
Um, you should write a summary of what virtual or, or alternative services you are going to provide. When you write in that, into that blank page, when you hit submit, it comes directly to us. You don't have to send anything, you just hit submit and you're done. And that's the questions.
Personal protection plans need to include regulations from California Health Guidelines, LA County Guidelines, and what was the other organization you stated?
Oh, the CDC, Center for Disease Control. Typically, they run pretty parallel. What you'll find is that LA County will be the most restrictive for your area. Um, so looking at LA County and comparing it to, um, the CDC, you'll probably see more information in LA County than you'll, the CDC is a broad, you know, for the country, and LA County is for our area. And right now, LA County's, um, says no more than 10 people can gather on a site that are not a family, you know, related. And that services can only be provided to people with developmental disabilities in their home, and it has to be for care and support. So people, I know it sounds like, well, let's just go back and do what we do, but we can't. So you really have to be mindful and, um, look at what can be an alternative. I know for, for professions like OTPT, speech, behavior intervention, those are considered medical services. So they can do in-person, but they have to have that protection plan in place.
Okay, what do you do with clients who previously had an average attendance of, let's say, three days a week, but during COVID, lost their job and their SE authorized them to come to day program five days a week? It seems that EDHS does not provide a method to allow them to attend five days a week.
Very good question, and we'll certainly, um, I'll ask Tom to pose that to DDS tomorrow. Um, our biggest, what, what we have collected, um, as a group to ask DDS is really surrounding, what about new services, which is kind of what this question is asking. There may have been people that were going, as you said, three days a week somewhere out. A company offered this five-day-a-week program that was virtual, and it really was great. How do we, you know, how do we factor that in? So that is a question that's being posed to DDS, so I'm hoping to have an answer to that, but I don't at this very moment.
Okay, um, for Megan, I just want to confirm, do SLS providers need to complete the HCBS survey?
No, self-supported living providers do not have to complete the HCBS survey.
If we are only doing remote services, do we need to complete a COVID protection? Oh, we already answered that. If we have no staff beyond ourself, does the last, okay, we answered both of these. So, um, do you want to reiterate, Mary Lou? Someone's asking again about the COVID protection plan, if they're only doing remote services. And for training, yeah, it's, it applies to you, the last box applies to you if you don't have staff.
Right.
I think the question that Ebony asked, there was like a previous question I, I asked in response to her. So I'm assuming Ebony's question about, um, the survey and do we, do we reflect how our services are delivered pre-COVID? I'm guessing that's about the HCBS self-assessment. Um, because, right, we started the self-assessment in the middle, like before all this hit, and all the questions are about, like, what does the, what does your service look like? Um, the direction I've been giving providers is to do the self-assessment about the way your services look when they're provided in person. Because this will end at some point, and we will be giving services in person. Yeah, I see Mary Lou crossing her fingers. So what they're looking at is, is individual choice and control provided in the way that you deliver services? And I would encourage you to fill that out in reflection of your in-person services. Because someday, we will not be in this virtual environment, knock on wood. And we want to, we want it, the, the self-assessment to reflect what your services typically, on a typical day, would look like.
Yeah, and, and really think of it as you submitted a, a program design. And in that program design, you laid out the services that you were going to provide. We're not doing new program designs right now, so you're looking at this, uh, self-survey as to what you are vendered for. Okay, so if that helps. Um, I know six months into this, it feels like we're never going to do anything different, and we're just hoping, you know, it will get better. But the survey is really geared to what your programs, what you were vendered to do. And right now-
And especially all the questions that have to do with, uh, getting out and being integrated in the community. Uh, we understand that that's really not quite possible, the same way it once was right now. So kind of thinking about how you have provided services in the community is the way that you should respond to those questions.
What is the Provider Relief Fund?
Um, it's part of the CARES Act. Um, the government, if you complete the form, and there's a simple version that just went out a day or two ago. What happened about a year ago or so? All regional centers, um, were required to become Medicare or Medicaid providers. We call it Medi-Cal, but it's actually Medicaid. So we are now all Medicaid providers, and as such, since we fund you, you are Medicaid providers and are eligible for the Relief Fund. You can fill, if you, we encourage you to fill it out, um, the best you can. Um, there, if there's any trainings on it, I'll shoot it out. They have extended the deadline till the 28th. Um, and if you're awarded these funds, that's great, but if you decide, hey, I don't know, I don't want to take these, you don't have to take them. There's, it's a no harm, no foul, but we encourage you to do it because, and especially now when I don't know what the alternative service delivery funding will be, to be very honest with you. As I just thought that yesterday, it could be different.
Mary Lou, can you send that out to us, or send it to me and I'll send it out? Okay, thanks.
We have sent it out, I mean, the, the QAs have sent it out to their people, but we, I, I have no problem resubmitting it to everybody. Um, probably you looked at and said, oh, what the heck, you know, because I don't want to go through all that. My understanding is the simplified form is very simple. And, um, I, I don't want people to think that you'll, as far as we know, there's no hidden, you know, tax or, you know, some kind of reporting requirements. Um, I know with PPP, people found that that was the, uh, relief for, um, businesses that was out, I don't know, May, June, somewhere like that. I know that that came, looked like it was easy, but came with a lot of strings. I don't think this does. Um, I can't guarantee it, but, um, I encourage you to fill it out. Vendors are to look for generic resources, and this is a generic resource. And now that I'm not sure how they're funding alternative services, um, I just encourage you to do it, because it could really benefit you in the long run. And we'll send that out again.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what is the role of the service coordinator in the self-certification process? Does the service provider need to contact the service coordinator before completing the individual plan for services and returning to in-person services?
Okay, so, we need all of the non-residential service providers to complete the self-certification and to have on file your, um, alternative services profile, is what I'm calling it. Then Westside will have a dedicated folder, we're not, I don't know, for the, uh, service coordinators to go in to review services and to make sure with their individuals, and if the families make decisions with the families, to say, okay, this ABC program provides all these things. Is this what you, is this what you're looking towards? Is, is this what you've been participating in? Do you want to continue, or do you want to look at something else? So there will have to be, the, the service coordinators will have to discuss this with, um, families and individuals. So we need your information so that they can do that. You don't need to reach out to the service coordinators, um, we will be handling that internally.
I think there's two questions that are there that, that I'm, I'm wanting to make sure that are clear. The self-certification for remote services comes to the regional center, doesn't necessarily involve individuals, families, service coordinators. If you want to provide in-person services for an individual, if, even if it's on, you know, like you're deciding you're going to do a one-on-one level of support service for a couple hours a day for a particular individual, there is a process that you need to go through with the service coordinator to make sure that the, the family, the individual, you know, the service coordinator, everybody is understanding what the service that you're going to provide is and what that person is comfortable with receiving. So there was a form that was created that described, I'm comfortable with going into the community. Um, I'm comf-, as long as everyone who supports me is wearing a mask. I'm comfortable going only in the car of my staff and not on the bus. So that's another process. I think that that was what the question was really getting at. So the remote services, go ahead and do it, um, and just submit your form to the regional center. But if there's specific, if you're wanting to transition to providing some in-person support, you do need to complete a person-centered plan for service in person that, that makes sure that everybody is in agreement with how that service is going to be delivered. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Megan, I, I wasn't going there. Yeah, it's, you do have to meet with the service coordinator and the family and, and the individual. Whoever is part of that planning team needs to meet, go over what's happening. The personal protection plan has to be filled out and signed or somehow, yeah. We, we have all kinds of electronic signature programs going now, so it's very simple. Um, and then, once everybody's in agreement, then it moves forward. So it's very important that you realize there's differences between those two services.
Please address, what is applicable for therapists providing psychotherapy? The individual sessions are conducted by Zoom. There is a plan in place to restart the groups by Zoom.
Good question, because it is a question that's going to be posed to DDS tomorrow. Um, we're really feeling that remote and virtual are two different things. Um, we need to get that more clearly defined. Um, for, for example, psychologists doing psychological testing or doing therapy or counseling, that's really not a virtual service, that's a remote service. So it's up in the air right now, but, um, I think it will be better defined in the coming days, but, so that, that's a question that's being posed tomorrow. I will get informa-, we, we have all these questions documented, so we'll try to get information out regarding some of the ones we, you know, when we get the information, we'll answer those questions.
Okay, this is an employment services specific question. Um, clients who lost their job have an active authorization for job coaching. Can we provide alternative services to do job coaching during this time and do intensive job development and provide a dedicated staff member that focuses on their success?
Oh, I can take that. Um, so if somebody has lost their job due to COVID-19, we know that that's, uh, happening to many people. If they're not, if they have been laid off completely and they're not on leave, they're not intending to come back to that job or there's, that job is not, um, available to them anymore. Uh, as an employment services provider, you are required to seek out the generic resource for that individual. So it would be time for that person to reopen a case with Department of Rehabilitation, and that would help with creating the job development phase. So, um, that would be what I would suggest would be to happen for a person who's been laid off. If someone's on leave, um, and they're, you know, they're using FMLA because they're, uh, they're not feeling comfortable returning to work, um, that's a different situation. And my assumption would be that, and Mary Lou, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my assumption would be that because retention is funding, is, funding is no longer going to be available, that we would not be able to pay for such a service, because it's a person, it's a person's choice to remain home from work on FMLA, um, and it wouldn't fall under a job coaching task. So while that's not the answer I would like to be able to give to you, um, I believe that that's going to be the expectation. So my encouragement to you would be to find out if that person wants to continue working or finding a new job and helping them access DOR to reopen a case for job development. So does that sound like what I said- So does that sound like what I said is correct, Mary Lou?
As far as I know. I think that you want to do an alternative services design for, you know, we could, you can submit that and we can kind of look at it one-on-one. If there's somebody that says, yeah, I really like, you know, I want to do certain activities, we can look at that because it really is individually based. But you would have to provide us with that service profile of what you would be doing so that we could then let the service coordinators know and let client services know so decisions can be made.
Yeah, I think it's particularly complicated because typically what happens with job coaching is the regional center picks up funding after the Department of Rehabilitation funds are exhausted. And so that's why you have those existing authorizations from us to provide ongoing job coaching. But if someone's lost their job, even if we weren't in a pandemic, the expectation would be that somebody would go back to DOR to open up a case for job development. So I know it's not the prettiest picture and I wish I could give you a better answer, but I believe that that will be DDS' expectation of us. That's my intuition. But I do encourage you to at least consider remote options. Like if somebody is, you know, if they are going to want to go back to work and you need, you know, the regional center to cover for a period of time, talk with your, with the service coordinator, because that's not uncommon. You know, we might fund for a couple months at that level of service while you're going through the process of reopening the case with Department of Rehabilitation. That's always a possibility. So definitely encourage you to consider submitting the self-certification for remote services, at least so that way, while the person is getting reconnected with DOR, that you have that coverage.
Okay, if we are courtesy vendorized with the clients at WRC for SLS, do we certify with WRC?
You certify with your regional center and they will, we, we've set it up where we will have a box where all, we put all of our self-certifications. So we will be able to pull whatever you've sent to your vendoring regional center and use that.
Hey, Megan. Really quick, can you say your email out loud for everybody? Because we're getting questions about the HCBS portal and I know that you need to email them directly. So I'm telling everybody to reach out to you, Megan.
Sure.
Can you just say your email?
It's also in the chat box. It's a lot of chat box, yeah.
Yeah, I did put my phone number and email in the chat box, but I do know there are a few people joining by phone. So my phone number is 310-258-4276. And my email is Megan, M-E-G-A-N-M, at westsiderc.org. And I'll go ahead and put the link to the vendor portal in the chat. So that way, if you do have a login, you can always try and log in. And do forget, you know, if you don't have a password, try clicking, forget, I forgot my password and see if it will reset. If it doesn't, I can manually reset it on my end. So, and again, just want to remind you that it's only for employment providers of group services, group and work activity programs, day service providers that are in-person support in the community or in a center-based program, and the residential providers other than ICF. So if you fall into any other category, you do not need to provide the HCBS self-assessment.
And Megan, along the lines of the last question, if they are, if they submit a self-assessment to their vendoring regional center, do they also need to submit one to WRC?
No, you do not. So as long as you have done the self-assessment for your vendor number that is associated with another regional center, you don't have to submit another one to us. It's only for the services that you provide in each regional center. But if you're vendored with us for one service and another regional center for another service, you need to make sure that you do both.
Someone says they completed extensive training on the topics. Being asked of them, when the stay-at-home orders started, should we plan more staff training on these topics?
Listen, staff should always receive training. And I think that even if you did it six months ago, it doesn't hurt to do it again. You know, things changed, you know, so you're now, it's mandatory to wear a face covering or a mask. There's different levels of masks that work better than others. You know, they're coming out, more and more things, like bandanas, they don't really do much. So, you know, encouraging and providing your staff with masks that will keep them safe as well as the individuals served. These are trainings you can do constantly. They, right now during the pandemic, should be talking about it all the time, really, truthfully.
And say you have new staff that start, for those of you that aren't aware of it or haven't heard the whole explanation, we have an online training portal that has several trainings related to COVID and PPE information that was kind of set up by the state. So if you don't have that link already, I'll have to pull it up, but I'll drop it in the chat box and I'll also re-mail it to everybody that's on this list. So that could be something that, you know, if you just recently did a training on, you know, whatever topic, if we have that available on the online training portal, it might be something you just want to assign to that individual to watch. And the accounts that you make on there are completely free. Anyone, any staff is able to use an email or you can log them in using your email. And all of those trainings that are on there are free and available. They can be taken as many times as you want. So just so you're aware, that's also an option in terms of training. And then, so the individual who was asking about OT-related services, they still want clarification, Mary Lou. They're asking, or they're stating that if all of my therapists are providing services from home, I cannot fill out multiple things on the survey. More guidance, please.
You're just going to talk, I mean, basically in your one-page profile, you're going to say, we provide OT virtually, you know, using Zoom or GoToMeeting or whatever. Really truthfully, it's more, what we're looking for is what you're actually doing. You don't have to say this, this staff does this, this staff does that. You just speak in, we just need an overview of what you're doing virtually. And if there's questions, then we'll ask you questions. I don't want you to get hung up on, oh, well, so this person does, it's not a program design. It's a profile of your service delivery. I hope that answers the question.
Day program staff are working in the SLS home, does this qualify as in-person services?
If they're providing SLS in the person's home, that is in-person services. You just want to make sure you have the protection plans put in place.
Can I, can I also add on that? I just want to make sure that it's clear. So if you have, if you're sharing day program staff to cover SLS hours, that's in-person SLS services. If you have SLS staff providing SLS supports in someone's apartment and a day service staff that comes over to provide day activity plans in person, you would need in-person service plans for both of those things. Just wanted to clarify that because it wasn't clear in the question. My assumption is that day program staff are just covering hours in the SLS, you know, in the SLS setting in that person's home. But if you're trying, if you're trying to bill for day services because those day staff are coming to the house to provide the day service, you need to have an in-person services plan for that day service. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just trying to pull up the training thing. So as an existing transportation provider, what steps are we to take?
I'm not sure. We are exploring options. You are on the radar for sure, the DS Task Force. I actually sat in on their discussion of transportation as a regional center representative. We haven't gotten clear guidance on that yet. We will let you know. We are working with some of our transportation providers to help us to deliver PPE to families. We're just getting that started. We're, we have applied to the LA Food Bank, to the food distributor. So we will be looking at transportation to do that at some point. We haven't gotten our acceptance yet, but I'm hoping we will. It is a concern, I can't lie. And so, but you are definitely on the radar and I'm hoping to get more information to transportation when we can. I'm not, I don't have a good answer unfortunately for you. But try not to panic, even though it's kind of panicky. Hopefully we'll have more guidance after tomorrow. Anything that we get, we'll get out to you. Because the director, the executive directors are meeting with DDS. My group doesn't have our meeting till the 27th. But we have given them many questions to ask. So hopefully, we can, we'll have some, maybe we'll have some answers tomorrow. Because we're not understanding completely, now that there's not retention, we're still under state of emergency. We're not, we're not even really clear what's going to happen, unfortunately. And I don't like being in this position to tell you that, but we're going to try our best to get as much information and get it out to you guys as it happens. And that's what I know, unfortunately.
If we are only providing in-person, community-based services and that is the service we are vendored for, do we have to complete the self-certification?
So if you are working in the community, you will have to have a personal protection plan and an individual personal protection plan for your program. So your program will have a protection plan and then each person participating in it should have a personal protection plan to ensure safety.
But not have to complete the self-certification because that's only related to if you're delivering remote services. There's two different processes that take place.
And I, you know, I want to make sure that if you are providing services, you are completely following all of the guidelines for that local health, you know, for that city as well as the LA County Health Department. I just encourage that you be very careful. People with developmental disabilities are four times as likely to get COVID as people that aren't. And they're twice as likely to die from it. So I know that there's more and more activity out there, but my concern is that we have a very vulnerable population. So you should have so many protections in place and that they understand social distancing, that they can tolerate wearing a mask. If you can get shields for them, get shields for them because maybe they're more comfortable or alternatives like masks. But you will need an individual protection plan and you will need an agency protection plan before, to do so.
I already did that one, sorry. Any, what's that?
There's a lot of questions.
There, there are, I'm just trying, some of them are kind of repeats, so I'm trying to get to the newer ones. Are voicemails still considered as services provided while retention funding is active through August? We have a number of client families who do not answer their phones and we leave them voicemails daily. We're facing similar challenges with caregivers who do not cooperate with giving us updates on clients.
As we, as the regulations are written, services can be provided by telephone and/or virtual for alternative service delivery. Right now I'm doing the retention funding, all attempts are funded because we're under a state of emergency and that's what the state determined to do. You have to realize that the money from CMS ended last month. So what is happening now is coming out of the general fund. So there has to be some change to that. We need CMS to buy in so that they'll continue to fund our services. So I don't have all the details as far as that goes. We are also going to be encouraging living, residential and other living options providers to assist their individuals to participate in the programs because they're there for them and they should be supporting them to participate.
Any guidance available on what objectives? We definitely need to state on the self-certification page too, for OT, PT, SLP. Can it be general highlights of what we provide? Example, feeding and developmental evaluations and therapy, areas we plan to address for standard treatment, et cetera.
That would be perfect. So that, what you want to do is say, here's what we can do remotely. As you said, like a feeding assessment, an OT evaluation, ongoing, you know, training for the family to implement OT. That's important because then the early start providers know who they can go to that can do a feeding assessment remote, or virtually. So, or actually maybe remotely. As I said, those two words are not clearly defined yet. So, yeah, that's really what we're looking at. The highlights of what you're going to be doing through, you know, through your alternative service delivery.
It won't work if we are providing one-on-one in-person support to individuals who are only funded at one-on-two or one-on-three ratio in terms of being able to bill for providing that increased ratio.
I think you need to discuss that with the service coordinator and inform them that in fact, this is one-on-one service and, you know, and the individual requires the one-on-one service. Excuse me. And, you know, and work with that, you know, service coordinator or the individual or the family member could request that from the service coordinator as well. Actually, that'll have more weight. Excuse me. So really to encourage the individual or the family, whoever's the decision-making person, to talk to the service coordinator, explain to them that the service really needs to be one-on-one. And it could be COVID-related one-on-one, that's fine.
What if we are currently providing certain alternative services, but in the near future expand to include additional services? How would we add them to the self-certification if we are not currently providing those things?
What will happen if you're going to, if you are interested in providing other services, you would have to go through the vendorization process for that different service. If that's what you're talking about, and then we would do a self-ification for that service. If you're saying that you're a day service and you've only, you've been providing some classes that you want to expand those classes, you can put that on your self-cert, excuse me, your self-certification one-page profile to say, hey, we're going to, we also now provide this. You know, but it has to be related to what your, your service design is. You know, if you're, if you're doing adult day services and you say, oh, I want to provide OT as well, it's a whole different, you know, service code and different service delivery. So we'd have to vendor you for that.
I'm an SLP vendored for in-person services, but I am only doing telehealth. Am I supposed to fill out the survey as if I am not providing telehealth?
For the, for the self-certification, you're filling the self-certification out while you're doing telehealth. Okay? So that's what, you'll do that for telehealth. It's allowed, it's still, you know, a directive, I don't see going away. Actually, they may have taken the end date off of it. So we're just asking you to self-certify that you've done this so that starting September 1st, we can, you know, it just continues. You know, the retention funding will be gone, but the service delivery is still available for billing.
Would you know, are we still eligible for the Provider Relief Fund if we have already received PPP loan funds?
I think so. It's a different, it's a different source because this is under the CARES Act. Well, PPP might have been too. But this is actually identified for people that are, that provide services utilizing Medicaid waiver funds. So I, I think, I've not been told yet.
In the vein of PPE, do we need to create our own stockpile or can we get the items from Westside, like masks and sanitizer?
Right now, the PPE that we have has been given to us for residential providers and supported living providers. We have not gotten any direction- We have not gotten any direction beyond that because as I said, LA County is only looking at people remaining at home and not, you know, being out in different areas. It really provides for residential services. So at this point, I don't have that option, but I think that if you're going to look at remote, excuse me, in-person services, you should be gathering. But the individuals you serve can come to us and ask for PPE. So we can, we, we are able to take, to provide it to individuals we support. But at this point, not today services or any other, aside from residential and living options services.
Nick is asking for a summary of all the things that they're being asked to do. So we have kind of sent things out separately, so we can compile all of those things with the resource links. Yeah, we can certainly do that. So we'll get that sent out to everybody. No problem.
I know it's a lot and we're not able to give you like firm direction because we don't have it. So we're, you know, because time is ticking, I didn't want to wait any longer to let everybody know about this. So, you know, we're, we're gonna keep you guys as informed as we can and you know, and, and as soon as we hear information, we're gonna get it out, you know? I'll have QA's blasted, we'll put it on the website. I don't think we've gone social media-wise yet. I don't know if we should do that. I think our website, if we can keep it on our website, so you guys have one, you know, one-stop shop, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, we, like you said, Mary Lou, we send things out as they come. So since things are always coming out all the time, we're just trying to get them out there. But we do have our, our COVID resource page on the website. We do our best to keep it updated with each of those individual things as they come out. So it, it does need a few updates from this week's things that have gone out, but you know, we'll do our best to, to get that done by the end of the week so that and be able to see everything kind of in the one place, including all of the directives, all the updates coming out from us. So just go straight to our website, westsiderc.org and there's a banner with COVID information that you'll be able to click on. So that, in case you're unaware of how to find that. And then, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if we do, but maybe we should have, if we can add something where service providers can go directly into like the updates. I don't know if we have that as of yet, if we can create it, but we'll let you know. It'll be there.
Which updates? The directives or which ones are, which specific?
Looking more towards like the alternative, sorry. The alternative services.
Comedy relief. I like it.
I'm surprised it's been this quiet. Um, now I was, I was just thinking if we need to have a place where we can put sorry. You know, about the alternative service delivery, maybe have some kind of touch.
Yeah, so we, we do, we have a provider-specific page under the COVID stuff, but we can separate out a section that's, that's related to alternative services. I don't know that we have that at this moment. I'm not seeing it as I'm going through here, so.
Because we just literally, you know, our IT Steve was fabulous, set up this box for you guys so that you could get these things to us. Nobody has to mail anything. It all go, you input it, it comes to us. And so we wanted to get that done and I was hoping to have more information. And I don't like the information I got about the billings, so I, I, if we do that, I think it'd be a good idea to do that. But I think we probably will wait till the end of the week. So if anything comes up, you know, maybe launch it or figure out if we can get it done on Friday or first thing Monday. So that we have the most up-to-date information. Cause who knows what tomorrow will bring. I'm sorry, but that's, that's the way it's been for the last six months.
We still have 14 questions and we've been on for an hour and 20 minutes and I want to make sure we're able to get through all of the questions. Some of them may, we may be able to answer, but I want to make sure we have enough time to get everybody's questions answered.
So is there a template you can share for the in-person agreement that staff are to review with individuals?
Yeah, we, we have a, a sample. We can get that out to people. You, you were talking about the personal protection plan. Yeah, we do have an example. We sent a lot of this out, but you know, six months is a long time. So we don't, we don't have any problems sending it out again and maybe we can, maybe this alternative services, we can just use that as sort of a a Dropbox for some of these things.
Is the PPE plan outlined on WRC's website? Not sure.
I think that might, so there's, there's two types of plans that we're expecting you to submit if you're doing in-person services. One is your program, the way that your program is making, setting itself up to make sure it's in alignment with all of the required guidance from the CDC, the LA County and the state of California's Health Department. That we do not have a template for. You can just create, you, you need to look at those guidelines. We did make some checklists and things like that, but it's not necessarily required. You, you should use the, the guidance that's from the state, the local government, the CDC, and I would also again encourage you to look at the previous town hall we had with Petite who went through a very detailed description of the plan that she created for her program. But so that's one requirement to provide in-person services, the program PPE plan. Then there is a template that we created for an individualized and person-centered process for each person you're going to provide in-person services for. What they would like their in-person services to look like and how they would like to be protected and the agreement with the family. So so the answer is no, neither on our website because those are kind of more individualized processes. But we can make sure, like, we just answered on the previous question that we get out at least a template for that person-centered planning process that you can go through with your, the individuals you support and their service coordinator. But in terms of your program and the guidelines that you need to develop for your program's safety purposes, that, that's not necessarily a template. There are checklists that we kind of use as a guidance that, that you can get from the QA specialist that you work with. If you need some support on figuring out what you need to be thinking about, that's something you can reach out to your QA specialist to receive. And then also I would again encourage you to watch the presentation with Petite.
Also, if you go on the LA County Department of Public Health website, they have a whole section on reentry and what you need to do as a, as a business to prepare to reopen, not reentry, reopen. So, and Culver City has that on their website and I'm sure other cities do. So you can even today, go on there and see what Culver City issued out to businesses when they first opened up. You know, you could, you know, do curbside pickup and things like that. So there's a lot of, you're, you're gonna have to explore a lot depending on what city you're in as well as LA County. I think those two, as I said, typically LA County is a little bit more detailed and prescriptive because it really, they drill down into, you know, the businesses that are business as well as people that are in the, in that, in this area. So our checklists aren't the end-all. Really you have to check, you know, public health and the city to see what you can and can't do. Or what you need to do to prepare.
Next question.
Once the certification is completed along with the summary and submitted, you mentioned a survey that must be completed. Where would we find the survey? Are they talking about HCVS?
Yeah, there are two different processes. So the self-certification is for remote services. It's do you want, you know, by 8:31 is what DDS would like, is for all non-residential providers to complete the self-certification if you are providing remote services or virtual services. The HCVS self-assessment is a separate survey for employment providers that provide group services, day program services that are in, in the community and in center-based programs, employment services providers. And I think I already said that, residential providers and social skills providers. I think I left off social skills earlier, but social skills providers are included. And that link I put in the chat, it's the HCVS vendor portal. It's in the chat if you need to do your self-assessment still.
Yeah, I also just responded to the individual question with the link, so that person should have it. Okay. So moving along, do you anticipate a decrease in alternative delivery service rates in comparison with regular rates? Trying to understand if this is the case, how many clinics will be affected by this possible decision and how many will have to go out of business? Businesses are already struggling with keeping up with rent, insurances, employee salary and benefits due to significant decreased referrals.
I hear you. I don't know the answer to that. The way it stood Monday was that it would, it appeared it would continue like state of emergency where you would look at February 2019 through February 2020 and do an average of your absences and then that's what you would build. But when I found out, I don't know if the company that they are, the consultants that they're working with are just gonna do that math for you or if they're going to create something. I don't know the answer to that yet, but that's where we stand right now. And I don't know if it's gonna be for, if they're gonna do it for every non-residential service or not, you know? I mean, this is, I don't know the answer. I'm so sorry. And I would have been telling you something completely different if we'd met yesterday morning. So that's my understanding at this point, is that now there is a consulting firm that's trying to figure it out. We don't have to do the math, but I don't know what that means.
We are vendored by another regional center. Can they get this documentation from Westside directly? So the various forms and surveys that they're filling out.
If you're, excuse me, if you're vendored with another regional center, they should be asking, I think most of us, not, not everybody's like, we've all done this in different phases. I kept waiting for better and better guidance. I don't feel like I could, I didn't feel like I could wait anymore because I didn't think it was fair not to get this information out. I believe my group agreed that we were gonna do the self-cert, well, we have to do the self-certification. And that we were gonna ask for one-page profiles or summaries or however you want to put it so that we could fulfill the requirement to get this information to service coordinators. They can't read a whole program design for every service for their, their individuals. So these one-page profiles are to help them to inform families and individuals. Your regional center, whoever you're vendored with will have, be asking basically the same thing that I'm asking, I believe. We agreed last week to do it this way. So whatever you fill out for your vendoring regional center, I will, Westside will have access to it. And we will keep that information that can be shared with the service coordinator.
Ultimately, I think the question was about are the regional centers gonna be sharing this information? So if someone's vendored with us and they provide services in South Central catchment area and South Central also needs that documentation, Westside will be providing and sharing that, the self-certification you do with us to South Central. So that information will be shared through the regional centers.
Yes, we will, we are developing a box, cloud storage to put them all in so that people, whatever regional center can go in and grab what they need. We've done this with a couple other services and it's been very helpful. When we went through the whole AV, the SB 81 rate increases, that's how we tried to handle it so that we didn't have to be sending paper back and forth. So that's what we're doing. But yes, they will have that information.
We have created plans for onsite services, yet we don't plan to return to our facility anytime soon. Should we wait to submit that plan until we are ready to start?
You, yes, if you, I would wait until you're ready to start in-person services. You, you know, you don't need to submit the plan, you know, three months in advance, but you should let us know, hey, we're thinking October 1st, we're gonna go back to having some in-person services. That, that would be the time where you would submit your protection plan and work on your individual protection plans. Because we don't know what it's gonna be like in two months. You know, we don't know where we'll be. Unfortunately, I'm hoping it's gonna be better. It's not working too well for all the people that said, oh, come back to college because they keep having to close them. So I think that it's a wait and see. So if you, I'd be working on my protection plan if I, you know, for returning to in-person services, but we don't want it now if you're not gonna do it for a couple of months. Cause it's gonna, it may not be applicable in October or December. We just don't know where we'll be then.
Our protection plan includes certain clients wearing masks, shields during in-person services per regulations, but we have some clients that do not want to wear either. What would we do in this case? We don't want to infringe upon the client's rights, but we also want to keep them safe.
Well, I, I think that you do the best you can. You have to make a business decision. Your staff are protected. You will have to do a lot of disinfecting behind someone that doesn't wear a mask. You're gonna have to make sure so, social distancing is kept at all times. If this person won't wear a mask and can't social distance, in-person may not be the way to go. I don't know. I, I mean, that would be, but the biggest thing would be you would have to be constantly disinfecting. It's, you know.
We don't want to deny people's support because people are requesting a service obviously and that, that they need that level of support. I'm sure you know the people that you work with and, and how much they probably need the support that they're getting. But I, I have to agree with Mary Lou that it would, it would have to really be on an individual and business decision basis because you have to think about both the support the people that you serve need, but also your staff and the liability with your staff, making sure that people remain safe and protected. So perhaps trying to at least get your staff some N95 masks if you decide you want to continue providing support to someone without wearing a mask. That's not a guarantee either, but I mean, some, you know, that, yeah, that's a tough one. But enhanced level of PPE at least for the staff, if that's something you decide you want to continue doing.
Yeah. I mean, in our residential facilities, a lot of the individuals have difficulty wearing masks. So the staff are really, they all wear masks and shields because that's all they can do at that point. Because, you know, people, especially people that have sensory issues and don't understand. But there's also, you can explore with that person, alternative type masks. Excuse me, they have masks that are hats that have buttons where the mask goes on there. So it's not quite as, you know, uncomfortable if they like to wear caps and things. There are some alternatives out there. I just saw where they're now selling the clear masks so that you can see the person and they're still protected. I, I don't know how good they are, but I'm starting to see those advertised. Maybe that, it's really gonna, you're gonna have to make a business decision and a planning team decision because you also, yeah, you have to protect your staff. If they get sick, they can affect somebody and then we just have this continuous, you know, never-ending problem.
Okay, next question. We got, we've got a few more here. Rihanna, you can see there's two that can kind of go together.
Um, you can ask them if you want. I'm just
Okay.
Sure which ones you're referring to.
Okay, so the, there's two questions on the provider relief funding. So one is, can we apply for the provider relief funds even if we do not personally accept Medi-Cal funds? The second part of that is when completing this, The second part of that is, when completing this, it asks for applicant type code. If we are SLS providers, would we enter our code as AG or other?
Um, the first one, now I'm even lost now.
If, if, the question is-
If they're vendored with the regional center, yeah.
So if, if Westside pays you money, you are a Medi-Cal provider, because we are-
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure what you're talking about on the care, I think you're talking about the CARES Act relief fund. I don't, I haven't delved into that. I apologize. I can look at it and maybe get back to someone. I don't know what AG stands for. Just don't know.
One of these, and then I'm not going to go back to that because we already covered that. It would be very helpful to have a checklist of the items that need to be included for the alternative services delivery plan. We have submitted our, our alternative plans to the QA specialists in awaiting review.
So, so I, I think that then, Attachment A is such, is that checklist. Attachment A is what, what that you're looking for. So Attachment A is a checklist of the things that you're proposing that you're going to provide in your alternative service delivery model. Since you've already submitted your, your profile, you don't need to fill out the second page. You can just click, check the box that says, I already submitted to the QA. So you just need to fill out the first page of, of the checklist, of Attachment A.
Yes, if you've already submitted a plan, we're accepting that plan, but we do need the self-certification. I did see a question in there from Transportation. Please hang tight, and I hope to get you information. It was regarding, can they bill after August 31st? Please let me find out, and we'll get back to you as soon as we do. I, we don't want to lose providers. That's why we're having this meeting. We want, we need you guys, and our individuals need you guys, and we don't want to lose anybody. So we're trying to do whatever we can to ensure that our services are still here once COVID calms down. And that's really the goal. We've already lost a couple of services that, it's very unfortunate. We don't want to lose anymore. So we're looking, for Transportation especially, we're looking for alternatives of what we can do. So if you can hang in there and give us a week or so. It's unfortunate that you're the last group that we really have plans for, but there have, there have been meetings, and there is an effort from the state as well as the regional centers to find an alternative service model for Transportation, or develop one, not find it, develop it.
Just going off of that, so someone is saying they're a day program providing services, but folks are refusing. What will we do?
I'm not sure. I will really have to explore that. That was kind of like the question about if we call but they won't respond. We're going to have to, we're going to have to find out that information. That's all I can say. If people aren't-
Another, I was going to say, another proactive option that I would encourage if you are in that situation where you have people that you would like to continue providing services to, but people are refusing to receive the service, is developing a robust website that displays the services that you are able to offer in any format that you're able to market the services that you can offer. And then we can make that available to service coordinators because I can tell you for sure, at least in my role, I continue to get calls from service coordinators asking what, who can help my, the person that I work with to access West LA College. You know, those kinds of questions still come to us. So if there are people who you're not currently able to provide services to, I would encourage you to expand your outreach to try and identify additional people to recruit into your program. Because since we're not meeting in person right now, we have a little bit more flexibility in terms of the reach that we can get, right? So if people can receive more virtual services, I would encourage you to try and come up with ideas of how to reach out and let people know what you're doing. So that way, if there are people you have to, you know, say, we're no longer able to provide services because you're not receiving them, we're going to open up space for other people who are interested to receive services. That would be another approach.
And you can also do a hybrid model. You can have some in-person and some remote virtual. There's nothing prohibiting that. So if you decide, hey, we do want to develop, we want to have an alternative to in-person, we'll still have our in-person, but there's like 10 people that still want to meet with, with us, but they don't want to come in or can't come in, then develop that hybrid model. There is no law that says day services have to be from eight to two or nine to three. They can be all day long. And, you know, maybe you'll find that there's some people that want to come later in the day or, or meet later in the day. So expand your horizons. And as Megan said, you know, market what you can do. Because the whole reason behind having that summary profile is so that we can let the service coordinators know what you can do. And that's really important because they're struggling as well. Because, you know, people needs for it.
I'm going to enable Ebony to speak because I'm just not clear on her question. So Ebony, if you wanted to go ahead and ask your question live, you should be available to do so. Or I unmuted you, I mean.
She's still muted.
Yeah, she has to unmute herself. I, I made it so that she can speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So my question initially was whether we are currently providing certain alternative services, but in the near future, expand to include additional services. I'm talking about the top part of the self-certification.
With the check boxes.
Okay, okay. I, I would go ahead and check them if you plan on doing that. And then in your summary narrative, putting that in the future, we will be able to do X, Y, and Z. So-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm glad you spoke because I wasn't understanding your question.
Then the last, oh, more keep showing up. Did I hear this correctly? As an early start provider, are we considered a Medi-Cal provider?
Every provider that receives funding from Westside is able, is considered a Medicaid provider. Doesn't mean that you bill Medi-Cal directly, but the fact that you get funds from us makes you a Medi-Cal provider. Because we are, we are under CMS, we are now Medicaid providers. We, regional centers weren't considered that, oh, I think it's been a year or so that we did it. It was not fun, but we survived. And, but that's what makes you eligible. If you, if you receive funds from us directly, if you are pure insurance, for example, and you don't receive any Westside or any other regional center funding, then you probably wouldn't be. But if you receive funding from us, you are able to apply for that.
What if a client wants to meet face-to-face and also virtually? Is that allowed?
That's a hybrid program, and yes, it is. Just let us know in your, your alternative services. That's why we're calling it alternative services, because there, you can have a hybrid program. So just outline that, one-page profile.
And create an individualized protection plan for that person and a program protection plan for your program to provide in-person services.
Yes, thank you, Megan.
It's a lot of paper, it's a lot of paperwork, but I want to make sure we keep reinforcing the various things that have to be completed so that everyone understands.
I'm so sorry. So will supplemental funding to residential continue after August 31st? This is one reason many do not participate in remote day services.
Um, that is something that I would have to defer to client services because I don't authorize funding. We are not removing the COVID service delivery that we have. We did special supplemental for residential because there were no day services. I'm not sure what client services will decide in, for September moving forward. I, I can't answer that, unfortunately. But we are going to be encouraging, very much so, that individuals are able to choose to participate in alternative services regardless of where they live. That is our stance, and we want to see that happening.
So this is a really specific question related to enclosure C. Section F on enclosure C on the sample of quarterly report regarding confirmation of using self-guided materials, how would we be able to document?
Okay, right now, I don't want anyone to worry so much about Attachment B and C, the one, the monthly billing and the quarterly billing. We're still getting guidance on that, and there's a bit of statewide confusion. So once that's firm or close to firm, we will then release that information to you guys. If we need to have another town hall, it'll be no problem to set one up. I, I know we did this quickly, but things were moving quickly, so we figured we needed to get this information out to you. And, you know, don't take it as the last, this is firm, because I don't know what's going to happen between now and August 31st. It's very fluid, but I do know you're going to have to self-certify. So we figured this, this particular exercise is, I'm pretty confident that this will be part of the plan. But don't be surprised if we go, hey, guess what? Things changed. I'm hoping not, but it's, it's, it's a COVID phenomenon that there's just no clear answers because none of us have gone through this before.
I do emphasize with the question because the, the quarterly report asks about self-guided materials and then asks you to document how people are doing self-guided materials. So Jay, your question is well-taken. We will, we will make sure that we get clarification on something like that.
But we will, IT is going to set up a similar link when those, when those two documents, we finally figure out which one, both, one that we need to submit, we will set up another, like, box, for lack of a better word, and you can just submit them there. So that it's just a sort of a one-and-done, because we know, as it stands right now, the monthly is for your records, if we need to audit, and the quarterly is for your submission. But then I heard yesterday it was opposite. So I don't want to tell you one way or the other. That's why we're really not focusing on those forms. I know they're, they're very strange. I agree with you. So we'll, we'll keep you posted.
Before we get too far away from it, what, in response to what Megan said about the question about a hybrid program, does that mean we will have to set up individual protection plan for each child C in-person in or outside their home?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, so we're almost through here. We have, if we have a good idea for alternative services, how do we get them approved and sanctioned by the regional center?
You submit your self-certification and your one-page profile. If it is a new service, then you would contact, you would send us in a letter of interest, and we would take it from there.
Can an SLS staff help an individual with virtual Zoom meetings with day program staff, or is that overlapping services?
Supported living is to support the person at their home and in their living, and I don't have any problem with that. But, you know, as long as the individual is saying, I want you here to help me do this, that's what the service is for. So it's not a duplication of service.
We are almost to our 100th question here. Are the agents, so you're doing great, Mary Lou. Are the agency and individual personal protection plan and the alternative services profile due by August 31st also?
We're, we strongly encourage you and hope everyone will get into self-certification by August 31st. If you, depending on when you're going to start in-person, we need to have that upfront, and you need to meet with the individual and the service coordinator to develop that personal protection plan. So the face-to-face is different than the alternative. Face-to-face, you're going to just work on that as you work on it. But it's not due August 31st unless you're going to start doing it September 1st, and you really have to have it into us even before the 31st. So it can, you know, so that the service coordinator is aware, everybody's aware, we've seen that you have covered all your bases for protection and for disinfecting and things like that. So you're going to plan on doing that. That would be really, you should be getting that in as soon as possible. But the self-certification, August 31st is late. We'll take them sooner. No problems. But-
All right. Last one I have here. The form is requiring me to click that I have developed a COVID protection plan, even though I have none because I don't plan to do any in-person treatment.
Wait, is that a question?
No, it's a statement, but it's, it's a funny thing that the form requires. Because if you're not, if your alternative service delivery is that you're only doing virtual services, you know, your COVID protection plan seems to be that you're not going to do any in-person services. I, I would say that that's probably fine. Just, you know, checking the box because that's your, that's your protection plan. You're protected because you're only doing virtual services. That seems like that would be reasonable to me.
Yeah.
I think that, that would be, it would behoove you if you were going to have to have any emergency family meetings that had to happen in-person to have a plan around that. But if that's not in the cards for you as a provider, your COVID protection plan is that you're only providing virtual services. That seems reasonable.
And also, if, but, now, getting back to what we stated earlier, if staff is going into the business, you got to have that done. So, and that's the business side of it. So-
Right, right. I'm assuming that this provider is like a one, one-woman show potentially, I think, possibly based on the similar questions. So I'm thinking it's a, it's a one-person operation. But yes, if you had staff and you had to have them come in-person, you would need a COVID protection plan.
Which every business is required to have anyway. Yes, I mean, it's there.
We just have two hands up, so I think, well, and there are more people with questions. So it is, it's 11:51, so maybe we'll cut it off. I see, there's now three in the-
Yeah, we've got to cut it off at noon, guys.
Let's cut it off after these three and the two hands. I'm going to start with Ashley Wiley. I'm going to promote you to be able to speak since I don't see a question from you in the box. So you are able to unmute yourself if you would like to.
Okay, thank you. Hi, sorry, I couldn't chat in the box, but I have a question in follow-up of the question that was posed about the referrals. In terms of the referrals, is it, is, are they slower right now? I mean, because I am seeing a, a decrease in the amount of new referrals that we're receiving. Is that just because there's less consumers that are coming in and the intake part, or like where, where is the disconnect right now? Or is it just not happening? I'm out of curiosity.
Yeah, I, I do know that intake has reduced a little bit, especially in the early start world, especially, which we're very concerned about. I think people don't realize that we can do everything virtually. So there is an effort to ramp that up. I think that there's also confusion about what to do now. And I think even if this alternative service delivery model is going to make us all look amazing, it's also going to give the service coordinators a comfort that we're going to continue in this direction. I think they're always concerned about referring when they don't know what's happening. So I think with this happening, that will give them a, a better level of comfort. But I, I will say unfortunate early start intake down all over the state. I think it's, with COVID, they're just not, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what the disconnect is, but that's a statewide concern.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, last two folks. So I don't know if Gregory's wanting to speak. I'm going to give him an option too. Let's see. Gregory, your hand was up, so if you, if you want to, you're able to unmute yourself and speak. I know we answered a couple of your questions already, so maybe not. Okay. Ebony has a couple more questions, so I'm just going to bring her on again to simplify things. And that will be the questions. Okay, go ahead, Ebony.
You said there were certain-
You said that there were certain house, homes that we cannot do services in-person. If there's a staff who already works in that home and returns to the home to do day program supports, is that allowed?
Hmm, that's a very good question. I think that, hmm, that is a very good question. I hadn't even thought about that. The state is, does have a directive that, that limits who can go into R-CISs, ICF DDNs and ICF CNs because of the medical fragility that they have. That would probably be something maybe we should, if this person is already coming into the home to provide support and they're coming in and out, I, I guess that if the provider wanted to use that person through the day program to do in-person supports, but that's a good question. I, I don't have a really good answer for that one.
I mean, my immediate reaction, I also just want to make sure that like, it would be very clear in terms of billing purposes too. Because if you have someone who is employed by an ICF DDN, who also is employed by a day service that wants to provide day-like activities or replicate day activities in that ICF DDN because they're already associated with that home, they're working there on their other hours.
Right.
You would need to make sure that the staffing ratio for that ICF DDN was maintained plus this additional person who works there in their off-hours working as the day provider, right? Because if you did not maintain the ratio of the ICF DDN and then you, like, or if you just counted that one person as part of the ratio and then that person's also billing for day services, that would be seen as double-dipping. I want to make sure. That would be a duplication of service. So you'd have to make sure that if they're there to provide day services because they're already associated with that home, like Mary Lou says, she's going to check to make sure that that isn't seen as, you know, a health hazard. I, I could see it making sense because they already work there.
Right.
At home. But you would just need to make sure that the ratios would remain the same so that there's no duplication of service.
Right. That staff member would be coming to represent ABC Day Service. They would not be ICF employee at that point. I just encourage you to make sure this person is really keeping safe. Because they're working at a lot of different programs. That's, can be a disaster sometimes. And so they're not, I'm not blaming the person. It's just, we've seen outbreaks in residential homes because staff work at a lot of different places. And sometimes they work at SNFs where we had a huge outbreak at the beginning of this. So, yeah, you would have to be, the person would have to be authorized through the regional center, that the program would have to be authorized through the regional center to provide this service. And then the person, if that's who the day service decides to do the service, then that person could probably come in and, but as Megan said, they're not part of the ICF ratio and they're not doing their ICF duties. And they're not on the schedule for the ICF.
Thank you very much. That is correct. They would be working outside of the regular ICF hours.
Right.
Great. Yeah, and then, yeah, you just need to make sure that that individual protection plan is still done for the day service side of things.
Say that again, you posed.
You would just need to make sure that you also do that individual and program protection plan for the day service side of things. Because if they're going to be coming and working in that capacity, you need to have that plan in place for that, for that service.
Yeah, the cert, the day service would have to have it in place and the ICF would have to have it in place.
Thank you, that answered my question.
Great.
All right, it is 11:58 and we have gotten through all the questions. Yay.
Great job. So everyone, I want to thank you again for everything you've done over the last six months. It's hard to believe that it's been almost, it's almost been six months. And it's been the longest day of my life, the way I look at it. People have done some very creative, fun, excellent things. I want to once again encourage people, look, look on, you know, Google some stuff. Look at museum pages. There's so many activities for the general public. Our people can participate in that and they can enjoy it. And you have integrated Zoom. How's that? When we look at the ACBS, okay?
And thank, and thank you guys too, Rihanna and Megan and Mary Lou. Thank you very much for everything that you're doing on your end. And Rihanna, as always, for setting this up for us. So thank you, guys.
Thank all of you. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. And the recording will be available within the next couple of days. So you guys can find it on our YouTube channel if any of you kind of popped on late and missed the beginning. All right. And I'll send it out to everyone that registered also.
And the one where Petit talked about how to come up with a protection plan is also there if you want to review it. Just a key reminder. All right, guys, thank you. Stay safe, stay healthy and we will update, whatever we can update when we can, okay?
All right, see you later.
Take care, everybody.